Welcome to the July 29, 2021 Selectment's meeting. We're going to start with the pledge. Okay, we're going to go to the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
All right, first is just an update that the REC field is officially locked. We did get that taken care of. We were able to find a lock that had a combination, but it's also got a master lock on the side. So we did give the gentleman that does the lawn care down there and the potty, the porta potty, it's an actual key, so that we don't have to worry about every time we change it. So they'll have those. So it's locked, the cameras are in, the cards are in. We're just waiting for the signage and we'll get that all installed and see how it goes. But we haven't had any problems, knock on wood, in the last few weeks. Next is just an FYI. We're going to be speaking to the Planning Board Chair tomorrow night. We've asked the Secretary to have him come in to speak to the code officer and myself in order to set up a workshop with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to talk about and get clarity on bonds and cash escrows and who sets them, how they're set, how much they're supposed to be set for. This is kind of all new territory. The Planning Board does, in the past, has set them. They haven't set an amount. They'll set some, they'll set it as a condition, but they're not setting an amount. So it kind of gets lost in space as to who's supposed to come up with it. We've got some solar companies now coming forward. The two that we have, we've kind of sorted out, but now we've got one that wants a reconsideration and wants the money back from the cash escrow that the Board, that the Planning Board instructed them to get. So anyways, we've gotten some legal advice and we're going to have a workshop with both Boards and Committees so that you guys can talk about it and an attorney can explain to you what your ordinance says and who legally is supposed to be setting those up. So, to be continued. I think that David knows that there was a minor incident at the transfer station where the company that removes the cans inadvertently hit, what was it? Did it hit the popper?
Yeah.
Yeah. So just a little bit of damage. We are filing a claim through our insurance company. The estimate that we saw, I think, was about $3,500. Superintendent is working with that and the Treasurer to get it filed through the insurance We did get clarity regarding Pat Stevens and his decision to not serve on the Road Committee that it is a position that you're going to appoint and advertise like you would. So we'll have that running and hopefully we'll have somebody step forward interested in the Road Committee. Speaking of the Road Committee, two Fridays ago, the Road Committee Chair and one of the Road Commissioners came in and we played around with the RSMS a little bit. We were able to figure out some things and kind of play with the reports and get an idea of what it does. There's still a lot more to learn in it. The state is not currently doing training, which I think we found out and discussed in the last meeting. However, the gentleman that wrote the program is working as an independent contractor and he's willing to come down. So it's approximately $85 an hour. I told the Road Committee Chair that day that I would mention it to you guys. I'm going to say, you know, we ought to get out from under it in about three hours, just to, you know, drop the screen down, just do a tutorial and make sure that we all know what the system has to offer. Any concerns with that?
Where are we pulling the money from?
Well, I mean, that's, I know that, one, if not two, I don't want to speak for both of them because only one of them was at the meeting, kind of offer that could come out of that. We do also have a municipal management training. I mean, the idea, because it's going to be on the town server and these committee members change, is that I'm going to be sitting through the training as well. I mean, it's, you know, it's a town program and we want to be trained in it to train others. So even if we took it out of municipal management, we're only talking about a few hundred dollars and we have a training line.
Yep.
You okay with that?
Yep.
All right. The property at Seven West Shore Drive, Ruby Reed Property, is officially on the website. It is in the newspaper, it is being advertised, sealed bid. All the details are on Acton's website if anybody's interested in participating in Next is more of a FYI. The Fire Department asked me to work with one of his employees about doing a fundraiser, if you will, regarding the 911 house signs, you know, the fluorescent green signs with reflective letters on it. So we're working on the best price that we can get and the idea is, you know, once we figure out what they're going to cost, you know, maybe add a couple of dollars to it for their truck fund or for our neighbors helping neighbors and we'll sell them right at the, right at the window and really try to push getting all the house numbers labeled in town to make it a lot easier for them and the Police Department.
That's fine.
Just going by, you guys are saying, take a breath, that's your turn to have a question. Next is just an FYI that I took another certification class. This one was just a licensing certification, something we've done before, but an update on liquor and particular licenses, dogs, vitals, that types of things. State's making some changes, but it really shouldn't affect anything that you guys see. Did get a letter of recognition from, from a resident regarding your animal control officer. And I printed it to have it ready and I'm going to apologize in advance, Jim, but, nope, it was short, but, oh, got that, found it. All right. So this is to the Acton Board of Selectmen. I write to commend you in the professionalism of your ACO, Mr. Jim Driscoll. I had the opportunity recently to work with him regarding my dogs. He showed the utmost courtesy, knowledge and understanding. He is an excellent representation of the town of Acton. Sincerely, Christine Doll on 13th Street. Got his personnel file, just an FYI for the Board. Speaking of animal control officer, while we praise him, because the flip side will be a little more difficult, now that the state of emergencies and everything are lifted, he has the not-so-fun job of enforcing late fees. Dog licenses were due December 31st, just like they are every year. Every year, the state of Maine gives you the month of January as a late fee. You don't do it in January, February, you start paying $25. Then we had COVID. So February, March, April, May and June, they waived the $25 fee. It's July, the wave is gone and we have, was it five, seven pages of unlicensed dogs?
Wow.
The animal control officer at the Town Clerk's Office, we do not have the authority to waive it, so please don't ask us when you come in. It's state law. I sent the Board an email about the town report and I know this came up last year with one of our subcommittees, but in the past, we've sent the letters to, you know, the regular people that show up in the town report, but as our committees change over the years, I sent you a list asking if you wanted additional committees to be, to submit. Because remember, I think, I feel like it was War and Finance. Was it War and Finance last year, I think, submit a letter? And it wasn't one of the normal ones that we, just didn't make it in. I know that we've got the capital improvement, we've got like zoning board. There are certain committees that don't normally go in the town report, but I need direction from you as to, is it, you know, we sending the letter to everybody and everyone that we can get it out of? Or are we sticking with the regular?
Sticking with the regular ones.
I mean, even like the animal control officer, I don't think, they don't normally put one in, that I recall.
I don't recall.
So little things like that have kind of come up. So what?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't hurt to have a few more in there, but it's all information for the town, but, you know. As long as we're not chasing them.
Well, see, and that's where the line comes down. I mean, you, to me, you either tell them that it's going in it.
Yep.
And we chase them like everybody else, or they don't go in it and we're done. I mean, I don't, what's the, you know what I mean? I don't want to be chasing people to say, what did you decide? Which, you know what I mean?
Right. Yeah, you're either going to put it in or, we're either going to have them put it in or then, or we're not, so.
Right. So I guess I'm looking for direction from the Board.
I mean, the only, only thing, like, the dog officer, it would be nice to have like a report of how many dogs.
Yeah, the statistics and whatnot.
But, I mean, other than that, to write up something like, you know, the Road Commissioners or the Selectmen do about how great everything is and all that, this doesn't. The Finance Committee, they put their recommendations on all the permits and stuff.
And that's already.
I mean, it's not a bad idea to have the two Road Commissioners do it.
Oh, they're in.
Well, no, they're already doing it.
Yeah, okay. I thought they were.
So, I just don't see adding to it, being unofficial, other than maybe some stats.
Okay.
You know?
All right, let me put together the list of ones I'm actually thinking of specifically and I'll put them before you next week.
Yep.
Without saying anything out loud, you both have a person in mind for the town report dedication this year?
No.
Okay. David?
Working on it.
All right, well, I've got a half a dozen for you.
Okay.
So, let me know when you have some names.
I just can't remember. I had it and then I forgot it. So, too many names going through the head.
All right, well, we'll press you about that another time. FYI, that we filed 89 tax liens today, although that feels like a lot of tax liens. It's actually down. Last year, it was, we did almost 150.
Wow.
So it's down. I don't know if it's, you know, stimulus, it could be a lot of different things, but the number is quite, is down. So, those were filed today at the registry. Next, just FYI, we know that the Governor is talking about, she has made a mask update recommendation in two counties, one of which being York. So for now, we are watching it closely. It is a recommendation and I trust that the Board of Selectmen are going to follow the same protocol we followed the first time around. If it's an order, it's an order, correct? Ed?
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the idea, but.
I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with it, but that's, that's what we've started.
I understand that we have to.
It's an order, it's an order.
We've started, right, I mean, we are a municipality, we shouldn't be as local government trumping the state government whether we agree with it or not.
I understand that.
And maybe it'll stay a recommendation, we'll see. August meetings, we do have, hoping that we'll kind of shift, because we missed a meeting and do a little shift of what we originally said. I'd like to meet the first three Wednesdays in August, the 4th, the 11th and 18th, and then take the 25th off. One of those weeks, probably the 11th, will be committing taxes, so we'll have a little extra work and we're just trying to make it a short week for the fair as well. So we'll have enough to make up in those three weeks and you won't miss the fourth week.
Yep.
FYI, that soccer registrations from the REC are still being accepted August 1st, which is next week, it's coming up, so if you haven't done that already. And I think they're looking for a couple of volunteers, gentlemen, to coach.
I did my coaching, I'm done.
Last item for me is, York County Sheriff's Department says their June updates. They only have three notable events and, I don't know, we'll just go through them. So the first one is they were dispatched to Canal Road in Acton, the public boat launched for disturbance. They did make contact with someone that was just in his car, we'll say, for, just, he was just hanging out drinking in his car, they took him to jail for intoxication. That was on Canal Road. Second one is a traffic violation in Shapley. Turns out it was his third OUI. And the last one on 17th Street in Shapley, neighbors were using our right-of-way caller was advised, this is not a police issue, and referred him to the Town Hall, where we refer them to it being a civil matter, so. Not bad, pretty impressive, just those three.
For July, yeah.
Yeah.
On June.
Oh, June, six.
July will change, because remember.
July, 4th, all that.
I was going to say, and we had all the activities on.
Be a little different next month, I guess.
All right, that's all I have for my update.
Okay, you signed the bills and warrants?
I have. Make a motion, make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor. Okay. Minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that. All approved. Favor. Department heads committee chair updates. Okay, I guess we have none. Old business, we're going to go Canal Road update.
So, two things on this. We have a letter from Mr. Bean who did the work, that we'd like to make part of the official minutes and hope that Mr. Doliver could give an update. I'm not sure which one you believe is pertinent to go first.
I took the letter.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to read this letter that we just got from Mr. Bean, the individual that's doing the work on the bridge. And so, this is, this was actually addressed to the town of Wakefield, to Brock, because he's the one that's been kind of leading up the thing with Adam. So, "Good morning, Brock. I am writing a reference, in reference to the above-mentioned project. I am addressing this correspondence to you as a main contact for the project from one day. As you are aware of the bridge incomplete three-day ahead of schedule, paving will be complete on Thursday morning with our appreciated coordinations. I received a rather disturbing phone call yesterday afternoon from Colin Greenham of the Army Corps of Engineers whom I am, I have worked with for numerous permits projects over the years. He indicated that he has received emails and pictures from Acton, Acton, Maine resident, who recently insisted we must be working without proper permits. I explained the scope of work and proceeded procedures to Colin and assured him the scope of work surely did not warrant a permit of any kind. In his review of the information provided, he agreed, no permit was required. Permit is designated for soil displacement in the judicial areas, cofferdams, de-watering and direct disturbance of the natural stream bed, none of which is considered, which, none of which is inconsidered. This kind of action puts a sour taste in my mouth, for one, to question my integrity and reputation being a design-build bridge contractor for over 36 years. This is the thanks I get for trying to assist Wakefield and Acton, Maine with a cost-efficient, fast-track solution to their red-listed bridge program. I will be on site today and Thursday for anyone needing to approve the work. In closing, I cannot thank you personally in Wakefield, New Hampshire, for all, all your assistance and cooperation throughout the bridge." Bridge project, and this is Michael Bean. And I did meet with Mr. Bean today and I, I apologize to Mr. Bean for the, the issues that came up. We, we did discuss this with him. We knew this was something that we didn't need. But the individual that made the complaint was persistent and unfortunately, it was for nothing. And I did talk to him, asked him to make sure that, you know, if we needed, we would like to do work with him in the future, if he would, and he said he would. But I do understand his frustration. It was really a Bush League thing to do, to go, to call DEP in.
Army Corps.
Army Corps of Engineers. And I was never contacted by the individual. The individual was asked to call me, I was the liaison to the project. Instead, went over my head and this individual is on the Road Committee. It went over our head and went right straight to Army Corps of Engineers, which should never have happened. Adam?
On a better note, the bridge officially opened at 1:00 today. Everything is done, completed. I went down to check the frame run off to make sure everything, pavement is doing proper, what we planned, it's going in the proper ditches, it's going away from the canal. Everything's come out perfect. He did a phenomenal job for us and assured all the time.
I, I went up, went up in about, probably noon time or so, I think that's when you guys were finishing up. They were just doing some shoulder work and stuff and I was impressed by how it came out, really, honestly. The entrance into Robinson Road.
Came out unbelievable. We expected a lot bigger approach, a big bump, and we were able to break that up, spread that out further than we thought and able to get that turn real nice and clean. He also made a beautiful new side holder for the ramp, the stick ramp sign. The other was falling down while we were out. He did it all perfect.
Yeah, he actually sawed it out.
So he did that, he's also having a nice plaque made, that's going to say everything to do with the canal, how it was built, the whole history of the canal. He's all going out of his own pocket and he's going to make sure that it's up there a week or so when it's done and put it on that post for us.
And he tuned up the, the turner, he had extra gravel, so he tuned up the turnaround for these guys, for the plow trucks and, I mean, he did a really good job.
That was the one thing that was in question, was how the transition was going to be on Robinson Road and whatnot.
It came out unbelievable. I mean, when I first saw it, we saw the three-foot bridge over here and then we're looking at it and how this is going to work out. We strung it out on Monday morning and tried to figure, you know, get all the gravel up there, we were coming over the bridge.
Yep.
And we were able to get that nice transition in there.
Perfect.
And then the way the pavement worked out today, the water deflection, it just went right, 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 it was good.
And we, we did discuss with Mr. Bean, the maintenance on the bridge, and he's, and he really says, because of the concrete that was used, not a lot of maintenance, but he said it wouldn't be a bad thing to get five gallons of sealer at some point, seal it, just keep it washed.
We have to wash it off from the starting after we're done, drawn and sanded and whatever, just keep up with it.
Do that once a year.
Once a year, keep it clean and that's it. Especially with the airspace of the original bridge, there's no water underneath it really, so it's going to keep it in even better shape.
Yeah, I was pretty impressed with it.
Good.
I mean, he was at the point, there was a set of stairs in the canal that's been in there for who knows how long. Like, his estimator, 100,000 pounds of bricks sitting on the bridge. Just some get down there and chain and fish it out, get all the trash out of the canal. And I was like, I'm doing this bridge, I want to have this perfect for you guys.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, Wakefield was putting new signs up on the other side, you know, new posts and everything. It really, it come together really good. And it was nice out Wakefield, Wakefield really.
Yeah.
Oh, it was unbelievable.
I hope we can have the.
We worked with him however, anyway they could.
Hope we can have the same luck if we end up fortunate enough to have Bean do the Upper Road Bridge.
Yep.
So, and have, hopefully, Mullen.
Now, we're going to put it up.
Yeah. Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, I guess we're going to go down to Bean, old business, Article 43.
So you guys were given a packet from Article 43 a couple of weeks ago and I believe that Mr. Langley here is going to go over the concerns. I think there were some concerns that the Road Committee felt, found when they reviewed it on Monday.
Yeah, we met Monday and I'll just read you what, what they told me and tell you. So, then on here, here is the application, application, his name, please, let us start. They sent the tax number, however, no information on whether they are statutory or nonprofit. And they've not spent documentation of the qualifications, we do not know the Great Pond is listed.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you just because you got, so Mr. Farmer can't be here today for a reason, so he's asked us to bullet them out to him, so you need to give them to me one at a time, so I can, one complete issue at a time.
I'll step back over.
Well, yeah, so what was the first issue? So you're saying there's no proof in here?
Well, the first one was that are they statutory or nonprofit?
Okay, so, statutory, and this, the Internal Revenue Service, now you guys, they've already received money through Article 43. I just want to, this is the, they have, this is, and the first time the Road Committee and the Board of Selectmen approved it. This is the second time around for this road.
Last year.
You know, I think we made, but when they got their funds, I think afterwards, that's when we turned around and this is what we got to have. So that might be why they didn't have it the first time.
Oh, you think that maybe it wasn't in there, the?
I don't think we had the stipulations at that point.
Maybe.
I think that might have been the gray area that we had.
All right. So statutory or?
Nonprofit.
All right, thank you. And David could be right, thank you.
And I'll just, I'll read this and then, like I said, we do not know that the Great Pond is listed on the main DEP bodies most at risk. It is listed on water quality list due to potential over the dog. And we don't know if the water shed survey has been done on Great Lakes, so this is a, this is just mine, it's just one watch. And then there's, there's no letter from DEP that the work will protect the Great Pond. In addition, the work appears to be managed, which is not covered under the current Article 43. I didn't think there were going to be maintenance anymore. That's the first question I asked.
All right, so you need clarification whether it's statutory or nonprofit? Is it listed as a great pond? Is the water survey done? Looking for the letter from DEP and is the work maintenance?
Correct.
I get everything? So with that being said, I presume that the Board is not going to take any action on it until we try to get additional information?
Yeah, send it back, get them, get the rest of the info on it. We've had, we've had road associations come to us one year after the next and even though they give us the information one year, we require it in the packet for the next year.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking, because I know, I remember Mr. Farmer coming up and doing it. I remember us approving it. It had to have been in that little gray area where we had, remember, we redid the whole stipulations and all that.
I'm not so sure we approved it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, 10:30, 19, you received $1,100.
I know there was one we didn't, so.
$1,100.
Because I remember that one for, because I thought it was a maintenance issue more than a.
Yep.
Okay. Where am I?
The application is different, so.
Okay.
Okay, we all saw that. Well, I guess we're going to go down to C, Purchase and Policy.
So with your permission, we will table this until Kim is back with us next week. Sat down and met with Michelle and we made some proposed changes that we'll email over to you. Some differences between items versus services and, you know, sealed versus just collecting them and a different fiduciary amount. So we'll send that over to you and discuss it as a group when Kim returns.
Yep. Okay. Let's go down to new business, West Shore Drive.
Okay, so, just a little history of the people present and for the Board, because I haven't had a chance to really talk to you guys.
Thank you.
This was not, no one asked to put this on the agenda. It didn't go on the agenda until probably about a half hour ago. So this started at the beginning of the week, sometime, I think, is on Monday. Mr. Winchell called me because he received a phone call from somebody wanting to know that had concerns about the culvert. And he asked me if I knew what was going on with it. We had a conversation about it and it came to, no, neither one of us had heard anything. So that was Monday. By Tuesday, I received another three or four phone calls about the size of the culvert and why were we doing this and were we going to involve Square Pond and just a lot more questions. So the conversations continued. They started getting calls or posts on social media about, you know, what the capacity of the room could be tonight and how often, you know, how much people could speak. And again, all I could tell everyone is that the Board of Selectmen don't know anything about this. There's no grant in front of them, there's no, I mean, and it was very clear that it could have been discussed at the Road Committee meeting, but everybody on West Shore Drive seems to have, to be aware of this project. So, and I wasn't going to bring it up tonight, but the last couple of emails I got tonight, I feel like the Board needs to address or at least be aware of. So in your packet are emails that we've received from property owners that certainly have concerns with it. And I've read some of them and it's not really, not going to get into whether they're for it, against it, but there are concerns that they want you to be aware of. The first email of concern that I got came in at 3:00 today and it says, "Mrs. Rue, we have been made aware that the town is pursuing the subject of culvert replacement. You should be reminded of our October 26, 2020 email below where we indicated that discharges of dreaded or filled material before the ordinary high watermark would require U.S. Army Corps approval prior to. Based on our experience, it's likely that if it discharges, if the filled discharge is both temporary or permanent, to replace the culvert, the town will likely need the permit." There's confusion with the Army Corps about, about the permit by rule. They want to take the opportunity to remind you that the Department of Inland Fisheries needs to be involved and, and basically the police contact us. So this is addressed to me from the Army Corps. I immediately picked up the phone and basically said everything that I just said. Selectmen don't know anything about this. I mean, there's, it's possible that the Road Committee had a conversation and they were going to present that, but how it got to this level without the Board of Selectmen, I just don't know. Well, I have more information, because Will and I spoke yesterday. But nevertheless, the next email that we got was actually from the Department of Inland Fisheries. And Inland Fisheries emailed us about a half hour ago asking us for all of the approved plans, the permits, and they've indicated that they received a call, or the Army Corps indicated they received a call, that the project was, was good to go and ready, ready to start. So I had the same conversation with Inland Fisheries that, you know, all I could do is apologize and say that we don't know anything more than what some taxpayers have told us or what we've read in the emails. I did speak to Will yesterday at the window. He came in for something else. Really sorry he did. Really sorry he did. We bombarded him. And he gave us an update, and I'm going to let him share that with you, but somehow it went from a little discussion to the whole town being involved. Go ahead.
So, yeah, last Monday, the Monday before the vote, we did break up West Shore Drive because the grant application is going to open again. We missed a few things that caused, you know, so we're running out. So we were going to go, the broker made sure that we're going to sign their application, and we did these A, B, C, D items, and we were willing to potentially let us go forward with the grant later this fall.
Perfect.
And I've all, you know, the second one, the sign of nothing tonight, and nothing's happening with the culvert anytime soon. We're just brought it up because the grant's coming up again, but we know we have some work to be after.
Yep.
Is that I don't, broker made sure it happens, and I don't know what I'm talking about right now, but nothing is, nothing is going forward with the culvert right now. The second one, I'm signing nothing tonight.
And that was a conversation Will and I had. That procedure, just like the way he replied, said it, was exactly how we would expect it. I mean, you know, I mean, we do have liaisons of the committee, and unfortunately for health reasons, that liaison wasn't able to meet that, but I guess, I'm not sure how it went from that to this to the emails.
What happened was, the phone call I got was from an individual that was told by a member of the road committee that we were signing this tonight. That's, that's, that's what he told me.
Well, and I will tell you that...
So the problem is, when that's being told, and then it gets spread out, that's why we're in this situation right now.
The Army Corps engineer did tell me that a member of the committee also called him directly and told him that it looked like this was a go and we were moving forward.
Yeah. There's, I can tell you right now, I'm not signing nothing until we get Square Pond Association involved and Inland Fisheries. I want, I want this a group thing, I don't want this a road committee blow this through, then we'll have this issue again. The reason why we didn't sign it last time was because the, pretty much Square Pond Association, when they heard about this, you know, they weren't very happy about it. And, you know, obviously, we got to fix the road, we got to fix the road, but, you know, we, there should be some, some working together and make sure, you know, we get everybody happy here. And appreciate the cell phone. But, um, so I don't know what the, what you guys' plans are. I did watch the meeting. And do you guys have a actual design for a bridge?
There was one that happened.
The same one that we had last time, right?
Yeah.
And I think there was concerns about that one last time, wasn't there?
Yeah, I, and today I did talk to the gentleman, the Army Corps engineer today. I called him today because I have emails too, and hopefully the next month or two, they're going to come down, we're going to get Inland Fisheries, we're going to have a big meeting here.
So, and I'd like to be able to reply to this one, because he's, they don't have any idea timeframe, and based on what they're being told, and I'm not, you know, I don't know who's telling them, I'm not here to make that, to say that, but this is, this is from the chief planner of the Department of Inland Fisheries. Dear Ms. Rue, this is the first time I've been notified of this proposal. Can you please provide the department with copies of the current engineering plans and all permanent applications? We would also like to clear, we would also like clarity on the timing of the proposed work, and again, request clarity on the navigation-related questions we have asked you in earlier correspondence. And so, I mean, we need to at least, I mean, in short of replying, saying we didn't know anything, because at the time the email came in, I mean, I, you know, we need to be able to tell them something, because I don't want to just ignore the emails.
Well, I think, first of all, we got to figure out who's going to be doing the correspondent with whoever.
Well, the road committee must have voted, right? Because they have that ordinance. Don't you guys have an ordinance or something that says that, what does that say?
Did you guys vote on who was supposed to be doing the correspondent with...
We were just, Leslie, we were just, Jared.
He's the chair, so...
Last time, but I called him today, just because the emails I got, or I called him today personally as the road commissioner. We had a lengthy conversation, and he says that we, you guys, our liaison, the town administrator, the Army Corps engineer, Inland Fisheries, Square Pond Association, anybody involved, we need to go down there and talk about it, because he understands the concern of, you know, if you have to, if we put it up, and he thinks that this is a concern, we would have to put a bigger one there, that's not, not going to sign it, but he, he knows the concerns down there, and he wants to come out.
And they want to add, right?
And what's his concerns that he has with it, what he thinks we can do, what we can do. And that's, and I told him that I just had a meeting tonight, and I'm talking to you guys, and hopefully sooner or later, we can set something up, and all of us can go down there. Because he, he knows, he's all on board, he wants to make sure that he does A, B, C, and D, just like, just like you guys want to.
So what the ordinance says, David, to answer your question, is the committee shall not communicate on behalf of the town of Act, and communications with any outside agencies shall be an advisory committee, and only after a majority vote at a road committee meeting.
Yeah, I knew that. So I appreciate it. Okay, well, I mean, at this point, we've got a beehive.
So we're going to, we need to reply at least to these agencies. Are you CC'd in them, because there's 10 or 15 people?
The only one I got was from the Army Corps, I didn't have a DEP or nothing.
Um, I don't know most of these people in here, it's CC'd to 10 people. Well, I shouldn't say that. There are, most of the members of the road committee are on here. Oh, no, you're on here, yep. We need to at least reply, so we can say on behalf of the town, you know, we're not ready, this is our plan, and...
Yeah, well, all it really is, is just a grant application.
Yeah.
That's the first path that they were working on, so...
But do they need the engine, do they need the actual engineer plan and all that to fill out the grant application?
I just don't want it to turn into what happened last time.
Right.
Go through all that work, get the grant process rolling, then all of a sudden, you know, we had to blowback.
And right now, we have, right now, we have plenty of time, because the grant closes in November, is it?
That's like, yeah.
Yeah, so we've got months.
I'd rather not put the cart before the horse again.
Right.
Let's get Army Corps of Engineers, let's meet with Square Pond, Inland Fisheries, and help with a couple of different ideas instead of just one. Because I'm not in favor myself of that one either. But I would like to see, you know, some other ideas before we go send it out, going all this work for nothing.
Yep. Yeah, we should have some time to do it, so...
And I also like to have one person putting point on this. Can't have multiple people calling the same people.
Right.
That does not work.
No.
So, you're, that committee, you're, that's your project, correct?
Yeah, it's my side.
So, but the, you know, you should be a point on this, because you're the one who needs to know the information when anybody else does.
That's why I called them today, and I actually had a conversation with a gentleman from DEP. I called them today after I got the email. He said, if we have something that, if we plan something, now either we meet up, they'll send you, you know, a couple of people out, you know, voice their concerns, you know, come up with a good plan, even, even if it doesn't meet the grant, you know, even if we can come up with a number, and even do it ourselves, or, you know, some talk, or...
And this is nothing that would be done this year, period anyways, right?
No.
Well, and that's one of the things, they weren't, I mean, they weren't even assured of that, you know what I mean?
At this point now, I want to, I'd rather wait another year, get everything, have a plan, and if we have to wait, I mean, I don't want to wait for a month with the culvert, because it's a lot of conservative, but it's just a, it's a very...
It's definitely not a summer project, which one of these agencies thought it was, based on what they...
Nothing happened this year, but nothing at all.
We appreciate the information you're giving us, because it's, because the call's just flow, you know, been rolling.
It kind of took a whole life of its own.
And I don't know what happened from Monday night to now, and, and I'm, and that's all. I don't know if I have any questions.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Because right now, we don't know if there's going to be a culvert, like it is now, whether it's box, whether it's bigger, whether it's smaller, or anything, so...
The guy from Army Corps said today that, you know, like, he's like, put a call in there, and he thinks it's going to have to be sized bigger, and I told him his concerns are bigger culverts with boats, and I know it's very complicated.
I think that the concerns that I got wasn't that, you know, I mean, if this culvert was a little bit bigger, I don't think it was a big deal. Obviously, everybody wants to upsize, you're always upsized when you do it, but it's making something gigantic that, just a lot larger than it is, I think is a concern.
And that's what I said today, is that, you know, we don't want a massive thing, but, you know, there's still a boat much there, and we don't want speedboats and large humans over there, but...
And most of the residents I spoke to was more that they want to be involved, and at least be able to hear about the project. They're only, you know, and, and I'm not saying anybody on the committee did anything, but you know as well as I do, and we talked about this yesterday, if one person tells one person, it changes as, so by the time it gets, you know what I mean? They just want to be involved, and, you know, they want to know if they're going to be able to travel down it or around it, what the whole big plan is, maybe have some workshops ahead of time, because it's a major project for you. My last thought is, I know you have a road committee meeting coming up, maybe as the lead, if the rest of the road committee supports it, they can vote to have you as the one piece of contact through this.
Well, as far as where we are, I always thought the road committee was an advisory to the road commissioner.
Well, the road commissioner's the members of the road committee.
I, I know that.
I mean...
Only because your road commissioner's not elected.
I mean, it does call them, the ordinance calls them members of it.
Yeah.
Right. But in any event, I mean, we know that the committee is supposed to be voting to put somebody in charge of the communications with outside agencies, so whoever you guys decide that is, I mean, it's just our recommendation that's due, but the committee can decide whoever it is.
No, they usually probably should be made, because it's a problem, one person, one thing, they're sad, and we're...
It would be easier for communications, and then the town, we would have one person to reach out, so, just talk to us.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll settle that one.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move down to municipality, municipality authority level change.
So, last week, I told you that Kayla and I had taken some additional classes through motor vehicles to change our truck level to become a truck town, and, so you guys need to sign off that you support us doing that. It's still not something we're going to offer yet, but we have to, motor vehicles is going to do another, is going to do an audit, you're just going to sign at the bottom.
We don't have to do a motion, that's right, or anything.
They're going to come down, they're going to do a complete audit, looking at all of our records and reports and everything. Once they physically upgrade us, then we'll be able to start playing with the system and do those boosters, and, so I'll let you know when we're ready to go public, but...
They do that audit, what, yearly, or...
Oh, they do the audit yearly anyways, but anytime there's a change, they're going to come down.
Yep.
Which, you know how much, I love audits, so I love when they come down.
Okay, I guess we'll go down to C, disposal bill.
A resident in town has sent us a bill, attached, please find the solid waste disposal bill for 337 Tattle Street. In January, the selectmen refused the owner of this property adequate access to the town transfer station. State law and Act and Waste Management Ordinance states that the town has an obligation to provide solid waste disposal for town residents. The town failed to provide this service to all residents in a legal faction. This is the town's opportunity to pay charges to prevent collections through legal action. It is a total of $123.
Well, we didn't, we didn't deny anybody anything.
No, he had full, he had access to it.
Yep.
He just chose not to use it.
Yep.
So...
No.
We don't need a motion or nothing for this, right? No, we're not paying that.
So, you're not paying this bill?
No.
It's pretty cut and dry.
You can't just send bills that don't act, and just expect them to get paid.
Yep. Yep. He had the same access to the transfer station that every other resident in town had.
Actually, additional. We had after hours.
I was just going to say, he actually had after hour times that he could go there, and...
We made plenty concessions by him.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll go with that.
Thank you very much for your bill, but, nope.
Okay, resignations.
So we have two. These are from the members of the fire department. One is for Sharon Jackson, writing to inform me that resigning my position as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, dropping down to per diem, so she's not leaving completely effective August 1st. She's accepted a position of EMT instructor at Stanford Regional Technical Center. So that's a great opportunity for her. The next one is from Michael Doe. He is also resigning his position as firefighter, paramedic. He's greatly appreciated, and everything the town has done for him, he will stay on as a per diem, but as I understand it, he's taken a full-time position pretty much right around the corner from people in the...
Yeah, I think he lives in the Casco area or something like that, so...
It's a long drive.
Yep.
I remember he was traveling.
Yep, yep, accept him with regret, and congratulations to Sharon on her new job.
Yeah, and the other gentleman, he got it on too.
Yep, yeah, he's, he's going, you know, he's this kind of lateral move.
Right, right, yep.
But Sharon's going to be the instructor for the EMS program at the Sanford School.
Yep.
Sounds great.
Yeah, congratulations, that's pretty cool.
Yep.
Okay, road commissioner ordinance.
I'm sorry, I've lost my agenda, so I'm all over the place over here. Okay.
I've got that on my phone.
Nope, here's...
You got some right there.
I do. Okay, so, give me those two.
Heavy there.
Oh.
I've got my feet wrapped around the cord, I guess.
So poor Adam, he came to me, just kind of, and asked me to look into something. All right, so this started because Mr. Dolliber was doing what, you know, he believed to be right in regards to some estimates that he had for some culvert work coming up, and he and I had the conversation, come on up, Adam, he and I had the conversation about whether or not these were, these scopes of projects needed to come before you. We often see Mr. Langley bring full projects to us, we haven't seen that from Adam yet. So he wasn't sure if, if that kind of qualified for this, so that got us looking through the road commissioner ordinance, which, remember, ordinances cannot be changed by the people, I mean, by, I'm sorry, by the selectmen, they can only be changed by the people, so when the voters approve these ordinances, they are your bible. I reference you to Section 2, Job Responsibilities E. The road commissioner must plan ahead and discuss all repairs, maintenance, and other projects with the selectmen. This includes developing a line item budget, work schedule detailing the work to be done, a cost estimate for the work, and the location of the work projects. This schedule will be adhered to except in emergency situations as snowstorms or other unpredictable occurrences. All material must be purchased in accordance with the Act and Purchasing Policy. So we called the liaison to kind of go over this with her, and she wasn't available, so I turned to the chair next. We reviewed it as David and I reviewed it, and I think you and I eventually looked at it. I mean, it's pretty clear. It says all repairs, maintenance, and projects. So the answer to Adam's question is yes. This was two weeks ago, and I did tell him not to stop work on his culvert, because you guys weren't meeting for a couple of weeks, and it was going to take some time to sort out. So if you see bills come by, that's us making an executive decision, he could keep working.
I appreciate that.
But we need to talk about it. I mean, we need to talk about the enforcement, huh?
You want me to stop?
So, I mean, it passed, and I know, I mean, we know that David has been, you know, was against the ordinance from the beginning for these exact reasons, but, I mean, there's not a lot that can happen here. You either put it back for the people, or we enforce it, because now, you know, the treasurer, you know, it's a trickle effect. The voters make a decision like this, it is your legal obligation to enforce it.
Yep.
You have a town administrator and a treasurer, whose job isn't to enforce it and not pay if we don't have signed off scopes of work. So, we need to start, we need to start doing it properly.
I think the reason that we varied from it with Adam was that he was appointed as opposed to elected. Now, not that that makes a difference, but I think if I remember in the past, that was one of our differences. But he is now elected, we move forward, no matter what it is, according to the ordinance.
So we read this, that every time repair, maintenance projects, every single thing So we read this, that every time repair, maintenance projects, every single thing they have to do has to come before you first?
So empty maintenance work, shoulder work.
Cold patching, everything.
Everything's never approved.
And I, back when this come through, I was against this for a bunch of different reasons, because, um, don't take offense.
No, that's okay, I'm, I'm not saying I agree with the whole thing.
This was, this was put through back when Mr. Moonie and I were, um, road commissioner and the road committee and certain people didn't seem to think that the road commissioners had the authority that they did at the time. And, um, as an elected official as I was, um, I, I, and, and Mr. Moonie too, we both agreed, and I won't speak for him, but I'll speak for myself, that at the time, um, we were elected and we were given monies at town meeting to delegate it. And, uh, certain people didn't think that that's the way it should have been. So now we, this was created to put a thumbprint on the road commissioners and unfortunately with the wording that's in here, when you put down maintenance, everything's maintenance.
Right.
Okay, that ties you down, so the, the selectmen, such as myself, being an ex-road commissioner for 10 years and, and my father being road commissioner and everything else, I don't want to do your job. If I want to do your job, I'd do your job, I wouldn't resign. But this is one reason why I did, because I didn't want selectmen doing my job. And so at the end of the day, um, you know, um, this, this, this only works, um, I guess, if you want someone like me doing your job or Ed. But it doesn't work if you have just Joe Schmo up here who has no idea on road work. So I believe that the job of the road commissioner that's elected by the town people is to be done by the road commissioner. And our job is to make sure that you don't break any laws and rules. But unfortunately, because of this, we have to have you come in, if you gotta go cold patch unless it's an emergency, which if you read down through, they, they listed out as an emergency, which I guess you can consider a pothole emergency because we have a 24-hour pothole law, so that's an emergency. I just can't make it a whole day's worth of work, I guess, you know?
But for the emergencies, the road commissioner must file a detailed report within three business days.
So, there you go.
There's a lot to, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of hand tying in this.
This is hogtied is what it is.
I mean, the voters approved it, that's out of here.
But, but at the time, this was pushed through because of a couple of road commissioners that they liked.
Yep.
And now that we're at the point where, um, you guys seem like you guys quite a bit, we didn't enforce it because, you know, honestly, I didn't realize the maintenance myself. I knew big projects, which anytime you turn around, anything you do, you don't build new roads, so everything you do is maintenance.
Pretty much.
So, um, myself, um. I would, I would consider changing this to a point where these guys can actually do their job without having us. It's, to a certain point, there's certain stuff there I can understand, but they can't do their job.
Maybe even put a dollar amount to it, so anything over a $5,000 or something, they'd have to come in with a detailed plan.
The dollar amounts don't work because if I'm gonna do a project, say, okay, we had an issue with culverts, okay? Well, I can't spend over so many thousand dollars without going, well, I'm gonna bill that week, that week, and that week, you manipulate the process. Okay, it doesn't work, okay? So, uh, if I went by $6,000 worth of culverts, I'm gonna put out three different bills for 2,000 bucks.
Yeah.
You know, that, you know, where we accomplish it? Other than the idea that.
It's gonna get done one way or the other.
It's gonna get done. These guys were elected to do the job.
They were given a budget by the town?
Yep, and they go in front of the finance committee, they go in front of the town people, and they, and I tried pushing this back in the day, but, um, but in the, but at the end of the day, it's like the purchasing policy and all that. If you look at it, it hogties these people to do their job. It hogties the transfer station, the, uh, fire department, and the road commissioners. And, um, you know, at the end of the day, these guys just can be able to do their job. And if, if I come up here, I'm a road commissioner, and I say, "Okay, next week I'm gonna do this, this, and that," I'm just gonna give you a number to make you happy. Because who knows, that number could change and, and I'm not, I'm not gonna.
It's a double-edged thing too, in one hand, the townspeople elected these individuals to do their job with a budget that they.
They proposed.
That they approved.
And they put a job description on them, technically.
Right, and then here, they tie their hands and say, "Well, yeah, you can do that, but first you gotta do all that."
As long as we say you're allowed to.
Yeah.
Now, what if I don't like him?
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And he comes up, "I wanna go do this, this, this," I'm, too bad.
This needs a revamp.
You ought to be on my radar.
Right now, we're stuck with it.
We're stuck with it until next year because it says any additional changes must be presented to the town body at an annual town meeting, so you couldn't have a special.
So unfortunately, we gotta go by this.
You have to go by it, and then now it's been re-pointed out, the treasurer, we have to, I mean, as much as I, I hear you saying with your numbers, but they're gonna have to be close to the scope of work, so she's not gonna authorize payment. I mean, we can't just, you know what I mean?
Well, no, no, we're not.
Gotta be within something.
Well, that's the problem, I mean, uh, you know, every job that you go duo there, you don't want to be the guy that gives a low-ball number, then, then you're too high that week. So what you're gonna find is, well, like anybody would do with any job, overprice.
You're gonna inflate the numbers.
And you're never gonna go over it because you're gonna inflate it so much, it's just fictitious numbers.
Right.
And, uh, they're not realistic, I mean, I'm sure if you say, "Okay, I'm gonna go cold patching from, you know, seven to four every day," you could figure that out pretty damn close. But when you start to get into other projects, changing culverts, this and that, you know, you always come into something and, but, um, for, for now, it looks to me like you're gonna have to, uh, give us an estimated cost and, and time.
All right, Adam, have you done the Sanborn culvert?
Sanborn, no.
No, okay, so he's gotten that one at 34, 34, 68, so we'll accept that one tonight, that's, I, you had packages.
So we can do this one following again.
Canal Road?
What's that?
Have you done the Canal Road?
I have not.
All right, so Canal.
I'm waiting for the first to be open.
Okay, perfect.
Close the road for a day.
So 46, 83, 34, how about Lebanon Road culvert?
No.
Skip right by that one? Godding Road and County Road? Okay, so can you guys look at the, um, Canal Road and Sanborn Road while he thinks about any other work that he might want to do before next Wednesday's selectmen's meeting? And Will, you're next.
Next Wednesday?
Yes. You have any work that you might want to think, that you might possibly be doing before next Wednesday?
I had a regular maintenance on shoulder work on Hopper Road and ditch work on Hopper Road that's washing away. I'd like to get started on the language shows at some point, but it does happen to me in the next couple of weeks.
So you're looking at doing work on Hopper Road?
I think they come end of August, so I mean, I got those culverts to get done. So I'm not waiting too much time to get this stuff go through and be able to get my job done, so.
Do you guys have any question, any concerns on the Canal or the Sanborn Road culvert that he's gonna replace?
Nope.
Can just initial a copy there?
This one's a better sheet than that.
And what was the other maintenance, you have any idea financially what kind of numbers we'll be looking at for the Hopper Road work you want to do before next week?
Probably, I probably got two days of work there plus material.
Okay, yep. So stop in tomorrow if you can and we'll put something together, it'll be on the record.
That's something I'm looking to do this coming week?
Uh, not this, the week, next week.
Next week?
Next week. Not tomorrow, but next week.
Well, before Wednesday possibly.
Yeah, because Monday, Tuesday.
So we're gonna need a couple of weeks to kind of get him into, you know, I mean, we can't let him start working. So he's announced what he's gonna do, we'll work on a, a number sheet for you and we'll get, we'll get ahead of schedule, we'll do the best we can.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Lebanon Road one?
He's already done.
Already done.
Okay, done, okay.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to get.
Okay, so it's just those two?
Yep. Will? Thank you, Adam. All right, young man, what is your next, uh, week's work look like between now and next Wednesday?
Uh, next week, I'm just gonna continue ditching on Acton Ridge Road.
That's fine, you don't need to, so ditching on. Okay. Any questions on the Acton Ridge Road ditching that he's doing?
Nope.
So next Wednesday, while I'm thinking of my head, if I give these guys like tactical work.
Yep, let's do it.
So he's on my question too, have we put in winter sand, you guys feel like I can ask them any time, I don't know how long it's been since we've put it sand down?
I guess so. I told.
I don't know that that's a repair or maintenance, is it?
Yeah, we're gonna work.
Well, it does, I mean, let's, I mean.
Yeah, it's not a repair, it's not a maintenance.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that's kind of, do you think?
I don't want to do it anyway, but.
I say we get a little wiggle room there, let's start with your scope of projects, let's get as much transparency as we can.
Why no, I have three or four, I'll just have to.
Bring it in. Yep, and just, well, we're gonna work with them until we can get on top of the schedule.
Yep.
We need them to keep going.
Okay, where were we?
Planning Board.
We're on District Two Projects, Planning Board, alternate appointments.
Yes, we have a gentleman by the name of Bevan Corbin, he, um, is fairly new to town, is a main resident in Acton, but he has served on other planning boards in surrounding towns and is interested in picking up that alternate position.
You have to read the motion, I don't care.
Okay, certificate of appointment, title 30, M S. R. A. 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, to Bevan Corbin. The selectmen of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions and laws of state of Maine hereby appoint you as alternate planning board member within four of the Municipality of Acton until 6:30 2024. Given under our hand this 29th day of July 2021, I'll make a motion that we appoint Bevan Corbin to the, as an alternate planning board member.
I'll second that. Do we, uh, all in favor? Okay.
Okay. Everything on this is the same as what I just read, except it is Kenneth Allen and it's gonna be for the cemetery committee member. This goes until 6:30 2022. I'll make a motion that we appoint Kenneth Allen to the cemetery committee.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
Do we want to do, uh, public comment before we go into executive session?
I think that's probably a good idea. We're gonna, um, skip down to public comment.
Well, first of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Bean, the job that he did on the Canal Bridge. It's absolutely fabulous. I think the work was top rate and, uh, I don't understand the individuals who had a complaint. There's no damage done to that canal whatsoever. And, you know, that bridge had lasted a long, long time. I'm really happy with the messages from citizens.
I think we were very fortunate, Wakefield stepped up and brought him to us and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We would be remiss if we didn't try to get him to do the road bridge.
Yeah.
Well, I, I went over and talked to him this, today, just because I knew he was pretty wound up about being called in. And, um, I apologized, you know, to make sure that, you know, ask me, you know, if we still work for us again, you know?
I'm sure he was.
And he gave us a.
Kind of slap in the face.
Very much so.
But, uh, you know, I, you know, I think that the town would be remiss if we didn't try to use him, you know, or, or at least try to get him, you know, to.
Quote, quote, as I'm another.
Didn't he already give us a quote for Road Bridge?
He did.
Okay, so I thought.
And I think about the Road Bridge, is, is it Milton?
Yep.
Or is it Milton Melz?
Same, Milton, town of Milton.
Okay, so town of Milton.
Yep. Yep.
Again, you know, we don't own that bridge.
Nope.
I'm not sure they own that bridge, from what I understand.
They owned the Canal Bridge too.
I'm sorry?
They owned the Canal Bridge too. Well, that's what Wakefield said. I'll give it to him.
One's historical, one's not.
Yeah, well, you know, I think Wakefield was the one that ended up putting it on the historical.
Yep.
I mean, that, that, that Canal Bridge was a engineering feat, okay? I mean, if you read the history behind that thing, it's a long, long time ago, it looked like a war.
1851, I think it was.
Really?
I think it was 1851.
And in actuality, they were two canals. One of them is injured still, uh, but anyway, I, uh, you know.
Yep.
I, I just think Mr. Bean did an absolutely fantastic job. Only other thing that, uh, the only other thing I might want to comment on is if the road bridge ordinance needs to be revised, that's your whole job, do it, okay? I understand we can't do a damn thing until next.
Yep.
Annual town meeting, because that's the way the ordinance was written, however, now, just as we discussed two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever, you know, purchase policy, check policy, rewrite it. Make it work.
We're working on it.
We are, we intend to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Do we have any other, uh, public comment? All set? Okay, I guess.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session, 4056A1 personnel. I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session, 4056A1 personnel at 7:13.
I'll second that, all in favor? Okay. We'll make an announcement there, our superintendent at the transfer station, um, is gonna be stepping down as supervisor to an attendant position, and we're gonna be advertising that, uh, shortly here, so.
That's as of October 1st.
As of October 1st, correct.
Certainly done a great job, it's nice to.
He has.
That he's gonna stay on with us.
Yep, he's been there 10 years and done an awesome job, so, yep.
Excellent.
Good, be sorry to see him do that, but still be there, that'll be good.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session again, 4056A1 personnel at 7:14 P. M.
Second that, all in favor? Okay, all set? There we go.
I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session, 4056A1 personnel at 7:20 P. M.
Second that, all in favor? Good.
Okay. That was to discuss the person that we, we did interviews for the fire department for, this would be Sharon's position.
Correct.
That was the first one that resigned. It was advertised for a while, we did some interviews, and we chose a candidate, and that would be firefighter intermediate, I don't think she's a paramedic.
Not yet.
So firefighter intermediate, um, Wendy Rednicki.
Excellent.
And we would make a motion that we offer her the job, the pay rate, based on whatever the fire department has for their schedule, it's already scheduled, so it's already a, a set thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so I'll make a motion that we offer her the position.
I'll second that.
Full-time firefighter, okay?
All in favor? Okay.
Excellent, she's already a per diem, right?
She's been a per diem for a number of years.
Excellent.
Yep.
Welcome.
Yep, should be great.
Awesome. Okay, I guess we'll pop down to, uh, announcements. We got August 2nd, Zoning Board of Appeals at 5:00. August 4th, Planning Board, uh, I'm planning, sorry about that, Select, Board of Selectmen, 6:00. August 5th, Capitol Improvement Committee at 4:30. Yeah, August, August 5th, Planning Board, 6:00 P. M. August 11th, Board of Selectmen, 6:00 P. M. August 12th, Road Committee, 6:00 P. M. August 18th, Select, Board of Selectmen, 6:00 P. M. August 19th, Planning Board, 6:00 P. M.
I can't think of anything else for tonight.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion, will you, Jerry?
I'll second that, all in favor? Good night.